So, I just told Dan, I said, uh, she's probably freaking out 'cause we're over in the office and...
Then it's time.
So, we can blame Dan for him being late?
That's right. Yes.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say.
I was gonna say, one more person blaming Dad, Dad won't matter?
No, so, good evening, everyone. Need to add, um, Mr. Chairman, need to add a couple of things. Maybe, maybe take that off, just in case.
You're gonna add some formal commission meeting or action items?
No, it's discussion.
Oh, discussion, okay. All right, well, it is 7:01, so let's go ahead and get started. Call the meeting to order. First item is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Dobson?
Here.
Mr. Earhart? Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Aravalo?
Here.
Ms. Krevier?
Sorry? Krevier, here.
Mr. Sly?
Here.
Ms. Squire?
Here.
Mr. Morse?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. And you said that we do have a couple of things to add to the discussion, the agenda?
I'm sorry, yes, please. If we could add, um, Oakwood?
He said Oakwood?
Mm-hmm. Preliminary layout, a change of layout. And then, um, we will call this Hekke Town Homes, please.
Scope's in the corner.
Okay.
H-E-C-K-E's? Good, okay.
Wren, sorry, Wren.
That's okay. So, entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda? Move.
Second.
They moved and seconded, start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion carries eight zero. And moving on to reappointments, congratulations to Josh and to Chuck for being reappointed.
Thank you.
Josh is kinda quiet tonight?
He is quiet. Just wanna point out that my attendance is better than him.
So noted in the, in the record. So, and like to introduce Kendra, congratulations for...
He's not gonna attempt the last name.
Nope.
Nope.
So, congratulations, welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to citizen participation. I didn't see anybody sign up, but that doesn't mean you don't have the opportunity still. Nope, all right. Moving on, formal commission action, approval of the minutes from the February 6th meeting?
Move that they are approved as presented?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries eight zero. All right, moving on, election of planning commission chair and vice chair. So, I have the instructions here in front of me, so the process of making formal nominations are as follows for the chair. Chair requests nominations for the chairperson, nominations don't have to be seconded, a person can nominate himself or herself. A member shouldn't offer more than one nomination to a position until all the members have had the opportunity to make nominations. Nominations do not have to leave the room during nominations when the vote is taken or when the vote is counted. A member can rise and decline the nomination during the nomination process. After each nomination, the chair repeats the name of the assembly and asks, "Do you accept or decline nomination as chairperson?" And the chair can say, "Floor is still open for nomination for chair." After the last of the nominations, the chair will declare, "Hearing no further nominations, nomination for chairperson now closed." Um, secretary calls roll call votes or vote to be taken by silent ballot. Um, that kinda, if we have multiple nominations, we might do it that way, we'll see. Uh, the chair may determine whether the vote should be roll called or silent ballot after confering with the planning commission members present. Secretary will announce the individual who received the most votes for chair. Once the chair has been announced, the nominations voting will take place for vice chair in the same method as voting for chair specified above. All right, so, we are now open for nominations for the chairperson.
I would like to nominate Rodolfo as chairman.
Do you accept the nomination?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing no other nominations, we'll close the nominating. All in favor of Rodolfo, starting voting on the left?
Aye.
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 Motion carries eight zero, congratulations, Ms. Chairperson?
Thank you.
All right. Chairman?
Chairman.
I, I think it's chairperson now, so. I always get in trouble on that, so be careful. All right, now we open nominations for the vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Stephen.
Would you accept the nomination?
Which Stephen?
Um, I'm going to decline the nomination. And I'm gonna nominate Chuck for the vice chair.
Okay. Do you accept the nomination?
Um, yes.
Okay. Any other nominations for vice chair? Josh is in prison, remember, so.
Yeah, they have to be present, right?
No, you don't have to be present to nominate. You have to be present to decline nomination.
You can all love them then if you're not here.
I think he's strongly against.
I, I figured.
I don't think that, he's given us plenty of reasons.
I know. Just saying that he's not here, when you, when you, when you don't show up to the nomination process, it's always dangerous, so. Any other nominations? Okay, close the nominations, start the voting on the right.
Aye.
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 Motion carries eight zero, congratulations, Mr. Vice Pres- Vice, Vice Person.
Chairperson.
Vice Chairperson. All right, and I believe that we changed positions now?
We have to do Amy. Do we have to do the secretary or is that just standard?
No, it's...
Oh, I was gonna say, I think that stays the same, so.
Well, I thought last time we had to do it, and I didn't know if it was...
Um, the bad thing about it, I don't know if she'll accept it, 'cause she isn't here tonight, so, no. That's okay, we can do it next meeting if it needs to be done.
Mr. Chairperson?
Thank you.
Hey, Chuck, aren't you supposed to sit over here?
Now, wait a minute.
You're gonna change the bylaws. Think it out.
No, that's danger, he's just gonna...
I'm gonna have Troy in the middle of you two.
Okay, item three, final plat application, Plaza Village, Mr. Pat?
Thank you and welcome, new members and new chairman and vice chair and... Uh, this is an application for, um, by Payne and Brockway for GTI Group LLC, they're, um, it's 217th and Race. Uh, we looked at this, it's a duplex zoning and final plat. We had looked at the final plat, or the preliminary plat, and then they came back and final platted two lots on 215th Street. The reason for that was they thought that there was a possibility that they could get going this winter and get everything going. Well, by the time it went through the process and all that, here we are already spring, so, they said, "Well, we might as well just do it." So, this is the final eleven lots out of thirteen, as you can see, the first two, um, do we have that plat, she loaded it? Well, if you look in your, there you go, you see there's the first two on the right-hand side, if you look at the screen, those are already final plated and we're ready to go. And then around through the cul-de-sac are the other, um, eleven duplex lots. Follows exactly to the, um, preliminary plat, there, they did have to adjust a few things from the preliminary plat on some drainage, obviously, through there. And this is the one, if, for you guys that remember, on the very north side of it there, the top, uh, that's a piece of commercial, it's right behind Dollar General. And they left that, um, to explore maybe some sort of use for these duplexes, uh, possibly, you know, storage just for the duplexes or something like that. 'Cause there's an ingress egress easement, I'm sure everybody's been into Dollar General, and it looks kinda funky there. That's actually an ingress egress easement that goes all the way back to this property, so. Straightforward, follows through, and like I said, the only reason they were, did the two first is they thought they would get, get them in the ground this winter, so. Any questions, comments? I mean, I can go through it all, I, I don't know if, if ever, did you have a chance to read through it? Kendra?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, but I'll, since we do have some new member, a new member and, I'll just follow through some of it, the, the points. There's, uh, $300 per permit, uh, for a park impact fee. Uh, there's excise tax of 15.9 cents a square foot, 15.8 cents a square foot, uh, excise tax that will be also assessed on this. And that goes with the improvement agreement. The final plat will be submitted to the governing body, uh, the final meeting of this month, as long as the improvement agreement is completed and they've paid their excise tax. We will not take a final plat without excise tax and the improvement agreement agreed upon, so. And this agreement will be really easy because we already have one in place because of the other two lots that are already there, so we'll just go with it and make a whole another one here.
Odd utility easement configuration.
It is.
It's all the way around on the front and only part of the front, or part of the back for the other ones.
Correct, because it, it is Evergy's preference now for everything in the front. So, if you look, there's not these 20-foot easements in the back, like used to be, uh, because everything will be in the front. And before you ask, no, there is nothing we can do.
And I just wanna point this out for Kendra, 'cause she's new, it's R2, which is duplexes, it's not RP2. Now, if it was RP2, the site plan would come in front of us, since it's not RP2, the...
It's straight, straight zoning, that's correct.
Right, it's just a straight zoning, so that, it's just platted, and then they can, they, they follow the city code, we don't have control over the site plan or anything like that, there's no site. I just wanted to make sure.
They're, they're still, they're still required landscaping. Yes, yes, they are. Well, and, and that comes up on a preliminary plat.
Okay, okay.
Because really what a final plat, maybe some of you don't know, a final plat is designed for the city to accept right-ofways and easements. Unless it's a planned district, then there's obviously some more to it, but just a straight plat, it's your right-ofway easements and we make sure the closure and all that, so, correct, so.
Yeah, and somewhere in our old comprehensive plan, there's a nice summary between how the distance on everything, right, the easements, the... And I think they're larger for R2 than RP2, but there's a nice summary, one sheet somewhere, somewhere.
Okay.
Chuck probably has it in his back pocket. I haven't seen that one.
No, Kat has them in this notebook.
Right, Pat, there's a nice summary, summary.
There is, it'll put you to sleep quick.
Any other questions?
Now, we have the landscape plan already, right?
There is no landscape plan due to this, it, it, it's, they're required a tree on every permit, and then they also do have to have street trees every forty feet.
Yep.
Now, I will say, on some of these street trees, if you drive up in Wiswell, um, I had to adjust those because the distance between the sidewalk and the curb, and it's just so close, and they're putting in nice-sized trees, it's like, this isn't gonna work in some of those areas. So, if you drive through there, you'll see some of the street trees are actually right behind the sidewalk. It is still an easement, but some of those street trees are back there because they're just, I mean, you start putting in a pretty good-sized tree and, you know, it just makes a mess for everything. Plus, it's gonna push curb and sidewalk and, you know, someday, I won't say it, but...
So, I don't remember, Pat, what the building setback is for the backs of the lots?
Twenty-fives.
Twenty-five for the backs also?
Yes.
And then, so obviously the twenty-five, the 20-foot utility easement plus five more feet then on the ones that are on the east?
No, the utility easement is part of their setup.
So, it'd be twenty?
Oh, that's correct, 20-foot and then five-foot, that's correct.
And it's still 25 in there, even though there's no utility?
Yes.
It's just...
Well, and we'll, we are looking at all these setbacks due to there's continual change, well, the gas company's changing their stuff as well. So, a lot of these setbacks, you, our code does say, you just have to have 20-foot in the back, no matter what. Well, it doesn't make any sense in, when no one's going in it.
Right.
So, it's like, that's just a whole, and, and then it also opens up us, I'm not saying anything bad about fiber companies, okay? But if they see an easement, they're taking it. And so, if everything has to be in the front, it might as well be in the front.
And what do you think is driving Evergy's desire to move these easements to the front?
Because then they don't have to get their trucks off the road. I mean, it, it does make good business sense, there's no doubt about it. You know, they can pick up a transformer, set a transformer in an hour instead of getting their little machine with tracks and if it's muddy and all that, and tear down fences and...
I was gonna say, but that also means a fence line in the back, I mean, if you're...
Oh, yes, yeah.
We're in the front, you're not fighting businesses or dogs or...
But then visually, does it mean you're gonna see more transformers in the front?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That's what I was gonna say, then what about our, our aesthetics in the front?
Yeah.
But doesn't Evergy have to...
They're green.
If that's where the utility easements are?
No. They can refuse to...
Then I'm gonna sue the customers?
They can refuse to do this, and it's everywhere, guys, it's, it's gonna be the whole metro area, so.
So, what does that, I mean, we, we need to finish this, but...
Yeah, let's finish this.
I have a question.
We can have it in discussion if you'd like.
Don't let me forget, what about trash service, is it per city?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll be individual sewers, individual water, trash and everything, yeah. On duplexes, um, now, I say this, but there has been a few screw-ups in the past, but on duplexes, due to the ability to sell each side, and we make them constructed, where there's a fire shaft through and meets all the requirements that each side can be sold, uh, we require a sewer tap and line for each side as well as water. We have some of them that are going in that were... We have some of them that are going in that were platted way back. And it's a single stub. And the stub's over here on the lot and they put in the house here and this one goes clear over and down and across. Well, the only choice we had is to allow them to run that person's sewer line in the right-ofway. Because if you take off across their lot, you know, can you imagine? Plugs up and they go and dig all this out and people say, well, you gotta put it, well, no, I'm in an easement, you know? At least in right-ofway, you might tear the sidewalk out, but at least you'll be in it, so.
Okay. Any other question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Pretty much follows the original plat, so.
Recommend approval to city council for FP dash two-five dash one. Second?
All those in favor? I'll start. Um, yeah, we, right, left.
Left.
Sorry.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Discussion items.
Oh, we got.
Thank you.
We added, um.
Discussion.
Oh.
Two.
Oh, it's a discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was a.
That, did she give you the?
My fault.
The one?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start with that one, please. This is Oakwood for phase five. Try, oh. Look at that. Uh, we all know where Oakwood is at. Um. So currently, if you remember, this was the layout for duplexes. And what all the, you know, we had discussed the connecting and luckily they're doing the streets and all over here. To do these connections in. Well, they would like to change this to all fourplexes here. It adds fifty-one units to it. And what it also, well, that's, I can't really see, down here at the bottom. They would change these all to single-family instead of duplex lots. And then. Right here, well, I'll, let me go to a different one here. There we go. This shows a little better. You can see that these would be all single-family lots here, okay? But in a portion of it there, they would like to put an amenity package. This entire Oakwoods was approved without an amenity package. Way, way back in the day. Um, and as we know, it, it had gone belly up and then went back. Yes, it is by the pool. That's correct. Uh, just ask, it's fine. You'll, you'll learn. Just ask. It's not a big deal. So it's right, uh, west of the pool. And what they're getting concerned about is, you know, they've already had some. Concern last year, you know, the pool was full a lot of times last year. And they want to make sure that their people, um, or this subdivision, I shouldn't say it that way, this subdivision. Uh, has amenities. So let me go back to, well, I'll just run through them. I don't like going back and forth. So this is kind of what it is. We'll come back to this, okay? Here's what they're, uh, existing, what they're building now out there. What we really didn't like is this way back door here and all. So this is what they're proposing now for this next phase if, if, um. You desire to go forward. The doors are pushed up a lot closer. There would be a, one unit would have a double car and the other unit would have a single car. And these doors are here. And there's a door right here, just like this one. Um.
So it's a three.
No, it's a. Fourplex, yeah. Two here, one and one.
See the door, so it's not there.
I knew how to zoom in. Now, th- this one, I made a joke with them the other, I don't know if they liked it or not, but I said. Are these in Jamaica? But, um, these, but the truth of the matter is, it's the sun shining against it. It's really not yellow. So, um, but this is. The design they're doing in, I want to say Belton. Somewhere over there. And this is the design that they would do. I mean, their, their layouts are all the same, but I preferred this than a lap siding and all, so.
Picture of the back of them?
I don't know. We'll see here in a minute.
Is that real brick?
Nope. Uh, it's slabstick.
That's what that.
Yeah. Um, no, I do not, I guess. Uh, when we go back through, I, I don't remember one, but we'll see.
So they're, they're gonna go to the.
This one here, yes. Well, I, in the meeting, Amy and I said. No, I mean, it's ultimately you guys' choice, but this is the style that we felt. If this would go at all, would be the style that you guys would choose. So. And that looks.
Those, the doors in the center.
I think he said five foot.
Five foot?
Mm-hmm. These are all five-foot setbacks. Well, we'll look at maybe one of these plans here. So this is the interior of a two-bedroom, single car, looks like. So this would be the downstairs and then this would be the upstairs. This is the single car. And you can see the distance there is not very far. And I believe you said five foot. This is the front door. Uh, this would be going up. You would end up going here, bedroom, bedroom and bath and bath. Uh, downstairs, half-bath.
Did they give square footage on them?
I think they have some.
Say again, Mary?
Square footage. I think they do have some here in a second. Uh, three-bedroom. With the two-car. Obviously, the bedrooms are up again. Uh, and you can see that small distance right there, which is a lot nicer. Now, this, yes, here's the square footage is currently what this is a, is a market rental. Oh, I guess I can read it right here. I was gonna have to walk up there and read it. So currently they have a two and three and three and a four. As you can see the square footage there, and then you can also see how much they get for rent out there. And what they're trying to do is take the rent rate down just a little bit. So the one, one car is eleven hundred round figures. Two-car is thirteen round figures, twelve eighty-eight. And then those would be the rental rates. They have an awful lot of people that are coming in that really need under that eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred dollar a month rental rate. So that's what they are trying to target. I've talked to.
I'm sorry, slabs or basements?
Uh, it'll be a combination because it's just like we have a combination out there now.
Right, but so.
So instead, well, the cost-effectiveness of how it lays. So in your lower areas, they'll put in the basements.
I got you.
It's, um, a lot of people don't know, but there's probably seventy percent-ish. In the existing that have basements. Um, I, I'll be real honest with you, when they first started out there and I had to do a few inspections. I was shocked. Every one of them I went to was basement. I'm like, I didn't, I didn't think there were going to be that many. So this will be a combination on how it lays out.
I thought you meant within that fourplex, it was a combination. I was like, how are they doing that?
Oh, it's communal living in the basement.
That's why I said, what?
So, uh.
Sorry, I'm tired, Pat. I had kids today.
Okay, this is a pickleball courts and a real nice, um. Jungle gym, whatever, package. This is really nice. They have a pool, area that you can rent, um. Everything's enclosed in this pool in its own room, mechanical room and all, so. It, it is nice. And I think we have a little better.
How, is that to the east of the development or where would that be?
That's to the east, yes, right here. This is, this is.
The pool's there on the other side.
Pool's right down here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's north of the pool?
It'd be northwest of the pool. That's correct. There's a development, oh, and the reason they're making this large and, because you'll, I think they have another picture of it here. But they're gonna take all of Oakwoods and allow use on it.
Did you say it's an indoor pool?
No, no. It's not. It's just all the equipment's indoors and it's own separate. What we've been finding sometimes is they've been putting their chlorine equipment all in the, at the. In the whole main body and then it makes for a mess. All their chlorine and everything will be its own separate building.
Okay.
This is the building for the proposed amenity. You can see it is pretty nice, gym and all. Kitchen area, they have an area where you could, and I don't think they're even going to rent it out. I think they're gonna let them. Use it, uh, for family gatherings and things like that. And then they'll have the office. For the whole complex in here.
So that mechanical's not for the pool?
Now, it's mechanical for this building only. That's correct. Here it is. This is, they've already built this in, I believe it Belton is what he said. Should have paid more attention where the, and so this is why they already have. They already know their costs and what they can do and all. And it is a very large pool. It'd probably be one of the largest ones we have in the community. And then these are pickleball courts. So you can see, you set a pickleball court in the pool. Or darn close. And then the playground equipment.
Are they gonna have something like hours for the pickleball court or like sound barriers so that?
Oh, yeah. So as you can see, that was, we did talk about that, is they, uh, revised the drawing for us. And this is all going to be, uh, hedged. Hedge, you can see it's different colored and they added that in there. I'm sorry, thanks for telling me that. I forgot, because we did.
It was Overland Park or Prairie Village or something. They had to go read you a bunch of things because of the noise or. So I asked, I saw it. Cause they were up like nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night playing pickleball.
Oh, I'm sure they'll have some hours of.
I don't see any, I don't see lights, yeah.
No, they, they were not putting lights. They did say they will not put lights on it.
So this would just be during the day?
Hope.
Yeah, right.
Kids was flashing.
Some of those pickleballs are glow in the dark.
True.
It's a sleet development. Um, you know, they've done quite a bit here in town, so. We'll go back, unless you want to see anything else here. And I mean, you, if you think it's something that we can. Uh, talk about and look at, you know, obviously you'll get the entire package, but, um. We really just didn't want to just throw it out there, you know?
Do you think the, uh, the access? The access to the east, would, would that be in place before this construction would begin?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're doing it all right.
Oh, okay.
That, that's all the work that they're doing right now.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, they'll have two of them in place.
Right.
They'll have this one and that one in place. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you, you remember that the neighbors, that was their biggest concern, was the construction traffic.
Yeah. Well, and you guys, I, I understand. But we spent a lot of time up there looking at that and the police department did as well. And it, well, you can go up right now. I was just up there, uh, Tuesday, you know, and. Yes, the construction equipment at that time was very bad and there was only one way in. Uh, but, uh. We probably should look at on some of these from now on, parking only on one side. Cause I was doing this all the way down through there about seven o'clock at night.
Is that a city code or is that through?
Well, what we do is if so desired, the planning commission would say, hey, can we look at this? It would go to the safety committee. The safety committee would run the analysis on it and then get back and.
Okay.
Yeah or no.
Is there. Is there a way that we can put in some type of a storm shelter since we're going to go ahead and. They're asking or intending to build the clubhouse, that we can ask for some type of a shelter?
We can ask for the construction of that to meet so, some portion of it or something to be, uh, storm sheltered.
For those that don't have the basement?
Exactly. And, and we hope that, I mean, I, you know, it used to be. When I lived in garden and all and didn't have a basement, because I actually started out in the trailer park, I would actually drive to the neighbor. You know, and that's what really kind of gets me more is, you know, some of the, I'm sure neighbors will open their doors, you know? I understand. I do. And, and we're actually working with the new code on. Some requirements on slabs. I don't know if you guys watched all the weather last night. You know, Lake City, Arkansas was just flattened. Um, so, uh, that was just one. There were several and there's quite a breakout, uh, outbreak tonight as well. So, yes, we're looking at that.
I understand that. And our next-door neighbor, we always brought her over and we took her to the basement. I get that, but not. Not all, I mean, and as she got up in years, it was getting to where it was difficult to get her there. So I'm just saying that there's some that. May not be able to do that.
And, and that is very good to have a place in there, so we'll, we'll talk.
If they're at the pool and that comes in.
Something that we're gonna ask.
I mean, if, if they're at the pool and it comes in, at least they can just go, or if they're at a event in the clubhouse, they can at least.
They'll be in, at least safe, right? Now, we, we can ask for it. We can, there's no problem with that at all. Now, if you guys decide to go ahead with this, then we can say, okay. They like it except this, this, this and this, you know? Bring that to us and away we go.
And, and Pat, it's re-zoned RP three, right? Is that right? And that, that, Kendra, RP three is multifamily.
Oh, no. No, 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 no.
So we'd have to re-zone.
It's zoned R two, remember?
R two.
We just did this for duplexes, not for.
So we'd have to rezone it.
That's correct, yes.
And they're wanting to do a plant, RP.
And we told them they had to.
Yeah.
Well, you can see all the variances on the construction styles and all. And that's why they've put, as you can see, that's blue and that was added later. Uh, we said it has to be an RP three district. One good thing about this is, uh, well, let me show you real quick. Not much green space. Scattered throughout. They met it because they had this big chunk and then ran down through here. Now, look. Good green space between everything, utilizing this with trail system.
I'd be curious to see what the backyards look like.
Yeah, we can, we can, well, they will be. Unless it's a basement, they'll have a small deck, but we can get that picture.
Yeah, I think originally it was, they had that little wall in between the two. Was it on these ones? Little privacy wall in between the two back doors.
That was the duplexes?
Yeah.
My guess is if, if you drive out there now, that's about what it'd be. And I can't remember to be honest with you. I think they do put a small fence area. I think the two on the ends tucked back and the two in the middle have a fence area in there. But we'll get the, we'll get the back picture. It, we just didn't want to fill this in there and if it's. If it's a no, it's a no. You know, we just have to know from you guys.
I, I don't really have a problem with it, just my opinion. I think it's well-designed and. It's probably a good spot for the RP three. Um, I think that the, coming up closer with those doors is pretty nice.
Oh, yes.
And Pat's throwing this out here to us so we can kind of give him some feedback before they actually bring us the site plan. We have to rezone it first.
Right. A little, oh, yeah, we'll go through all the steps and, but a little perspective, this right here in the corner, that is one sixty-nine.
Yeah, it's a good spot for it. So.
And isn't on the west side, north of sixty-nine, one sixty-nine, that's like a marshy area or something? They really was difficult to try to do anything. I think we had to put a bridge in there if they were going to do anything there.
Oh, yes, up here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and the other, the other thing that I think is good about it is. This row and they're on each side, you can't, we cut that off, I apologize, of single families now. Because the other plan, it's duplexes up against single families.
Yeah, I like that.
It's, it's more open.
The duplexes. The transition's a lot better, yes, and.
Especially if they're adding amenities to it.
Yes, and you look at it and I know fifty-one units, doors is still quite a bit, but just from there. To there, just the green space alone, in my opinion.
Opened it up.
And it looks like, if you really just kinda look, say, well, okay. But they, all this green space, my lands, they couldn't have gotten fifty more, fifty more, but they just, just fifty-one more, so.
Yeah, it doesn't bother me that it, because the layout just makes it look so much different.
It's, I think it is, you're gonna have a lot more green space, they're gonna put in the walking trails. And then the other thing is, and I know, you know, it shouldn't play into our. Thought pattern, but it does, um, right there.
The brace is pretty nice.
You know.
Somebody that needs to move.
We've got to have a variety.
So Pat, are these? Fourplexes lower square footage than what they were proposing before in terms of?
Uh, there's your square footage right there.
Does say.
So they are smaller.
The top, right.
And is that what's freeing up the additional space since the density, the number of doors is higher here?
No, it, it's, you're getting four on a duplex lot, that's really what it is.
They're going two stories and all. It's all in all the living areas upstairs.
That's correct. And you can see, current is the top. That are already all constructed and all rented. Uh, they have one building, I think, left to complete, maybe two buildings left to complete, but they're all called for. Uh, and then the potential down at the bottom, that would be the size, square footage, price range, everything. They, I, I mean, we can't really ask for much, they put this slide together. And they've told, they told us everything, guys.
The only uh objection I think you might hear potentially from the neighbors who are concerned about traffic. Would be the addition of thirty-six percent more doors in that same acreage. That would be it, but I think the look of this is nice, opening of the green space, adding in the trails, adding amenities in the pool. Obviously, that's a carrot for the community, for the single family.
Well, you'll have to remember also, all those neighbors that were in about trafficking all will now have an amenity package. The truth matter is about seven, I think it was sixty-six percent of this place I rented.
It's like night and.
So they were not happy when they came in. I'm sorry.
It's like night and day between the congested R two duplexes and then this new design.
In my opinion, it is, you know, you take a look at, and I mean, really, you look, they're gonna have the walking trails and. A lot more area here. I'm not trying to sell it for them, I'm just telling you, and this is the existing, okay? These are the existing and then this would be the proposed.
How was the setback on those existing doors?
Uh, twenty-five, oh, you mean the existing doors, uh, well, that's a full garage there, so twenty foot.
Say at least twenty or twenty.
That, that's a full.
The newer ones, so they're probably five?
You can see, but you can see there, but then, if you look at this, you can see right there's that door. It might be seven on some of it, but for the most part, it's five or seven, a lot better.
Oh, I don't think so.
What's that?
It's not in code for the doors, can't be that far back.
Well, okay, but don't, don't mix them. Plan district, they can do anything they want, you gotta prove it. On a regular, on a regular district, you're not supposed to set the door back over fifteen, ten and fifteen foot. Ten foot, but on your planned districts, and that's what this one. Was, and this will be also, but this was a planned district. And they are putting back doors on everything, believe it or not, the, this square footage of homes. Do not require a back door at all. For exiting purposes or anything, but they did put them on there. So I, I don't know, you know. I was pleased with them laying it all out on the line, I mean, even the rents and everything. So it's really kinda in your court, how you want me to proceed with this, well, how you want Amy to proceed with it.
Maybe let's bring back a full package.
I've just got a question and observation, so. And I think it's the original phase one, maybe the single family, which is off of two hundred fifteenth terrace. And it's the area where you go in and it's, it's captive, where it's just a, a square that you go around and there's one entrance and one exit. But when I've driven through there, the, the setbacks to the garages. If there's a full-sized truck part of the garage, then it pretty much blocks the sidewalk. And I noticed that like people can't really use the.
So that was approved in, it was either twenty, tw- twenty oh two or twenty oh five.
Okay, so a long time ago.
Well, yeah, well.
So, so the, this, because it's from, i- in the same area, it, it's, has greater setbacks. And plenty of room for the, a car in the driveway without impeding.
Yes, and there's two differences on this that I, one of them I really should have, um, I forgot all about it. These are going to be public streets. Where you drove through is all private street. And I don't know how many calls city hall received this year when they didn't plow the snow there. And what happened is they had a contractor and, you know, it's supposed to be a good contractor, reputable, he does a lot of stuff, well. Overland Park pays more, so. So, but that, there's nothing we could have done. Now, these are city streets, so they have to meet that setback requirement.
Can, can that, can those private streets contract with the city or not?
No, we don't, we, yeah, no.
For cash?
It wouldn't matter. Can you?
It's over to access for the highway.
The, um, all this runs down and back through over there to two hundred fifteenth. Cause this is Miami County, that's correct, and then these run up to Webster. And if you've been by there, you'll see that, that subdivision's being put in right now there. And the neighbors that live on Webster are very happy. And I'm serious, cause that was a mess back there. This one? Yep, goes down and then it hits a road and goes up in there.
So basically you're, yeah, so you got the one going out to South Street and then the other.
Two.
O two Webster?
That's correct, oops, sorry. And uh Chuck, I have not checked these setbacks on this. But I was not worried at all because of all the green space in the back. If they're, if they're not the twenty-five foot back, then they have plenty of room to push it back another five foot.
Yeah, it looks like it, so these are gonna be rentals and they're not meant set to be sold individually.
Yeah, they'll still have to, that is correct, but they still have to build them as they will be sold as individual units in the future. So when I'm long gone, if someone buys one, at least it will be, you know, fire rated. So would you like me just to tell them to put a package together? And we'll look at it before a rezoning and get some setback, um. True setback shown in a typical plot plan and things like that.
I would go ahead and do it.
Yeah, sounds good.
And we'll have them put together, just like any plan, development, typical plot plan, typical landscaping and things like that.
And I appreciate coming to, to the planning commission this early with this level of detail, I think that's.
When they were talking, like, yeah, I, I'm not going blind, but they, they did a lot more than I thought they were gonna do. So, I mean, to put the existing rents and what the proposed rents, I thought that was really. Real, real open and full disclosure, alright, well, we appreciate that, so I'll talk to them about that.
And all this is in there?
This is, this is where the green space is. That was the whole area.
Where's the marshy area?
Right over here.
Okay, okay. Are you ready to go to the next one, Mr. Chairman? Okay, this is Mr. Heckey's uh lot that, it's an infill lot, it sits at, where's that sitting? Johnson and Madison, right, right straight down the street here on the corner. So, and looking at, as you can tell, it's a fairly large lot, it's already zoned. Yes, um, it's already zoned and what he would like to do is. Place these two, threeplexes on there. And let me see if I can zoom that in just a little bit.
Said Johnson and Madison?
Yes.
Two, three places.
It's been an empty lot for quite some time. And might as well not just keep mowed it and get some additional, now, these will be purchased, or these will be. Uh, built, that they could be purchased individually, just like all of them that we make them build, as you can see. There would be three of them that would come off of Madison and then three of them that would come off of Johnson. I don't know, I think they have. You can see that, I don't know, what's the setback from the street on those, Dan? No, from the street, it'd end up about thirty-six.
From Addison Street?
Yeah, so if you, if you were standing on the street, they'd be about thirty-six foot back because it's a non-curb street there. And he already has the plans, well, and you can see it on here. At engineering, uh, where you can see the storm drainage that's already shown, uh, it's.
The dark line over here. In the back. That's the design storm drainage, it's already. So he did a lot of.
Preliminary work on this, eh, eh, he could go in and build a sixplex on it. Uh, without.
What'd you say it was on?
R four. You know, he could build a couple of duplexes on there, but to try and utilize this space the best he can and utilize both streets. Since it is a corner lot, uh, this is what he is proposing. Obviously, we come back with a lot more detail. But we wanted to see if, if you were receptive to that, so there's no zoning change. It's, it's really just the, um. Site plan, I don't know if I have something.
The distance from that existing home to the north to this unit here on the left.
Let me see here, that is five. From, from the existing house to where the fourplexes start, looks like about seventeen foot.
You're talking about from that duplex?
Here.
That's a duplex.
I don't know what it is.
Those village self-storage units?
No, it doesn't, oh, no, it'll be a combination. No replat, or the, he's gonna combine the lot, there's two lots, is that what you're looking at? No, it's a combination, and I know the, the county shows that. But you only get one tax bill, right? They've already. Minded, even though, now, that's why we're site planning it and all that. You can see how the two lots uh show up now? Could have put two duplexes, one would be facing, well, just like this, same way. But. And, and the county has already combined them on one taxing.
And you said it's R four, but.
And I, I had another.
So how is the?
There's what they look like.
You said it could be sold separately, I was trying to figure if those lots are gonna be, those individual units.
Just straight down.
So.
There's lots of ways to do it, Troy, Eric, uh, let me go back to that.
I, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying.
Uh, so in the back corner where it says lot nine, that could be common space.
Lot nine up there.
Top right-hand corner. That could be common space and down in this could be common space as well, down in your left-hand corner. And you could divide those off. That's correct.
But you were saying they could be sold separately?
That's correct. Well, if, eh, eh, that's a question, you guys.
Were there any yard with them if they could be sold separately, I'm, I'm just.
No, common space.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the only yard they get is what's in front and what's in back.
That's correct.
They're just a slice of a pie, a slice of a cake.
That's right, just like a shotgun house. Down through the old parts and all.
So Heckey would retain ownership of the common area?
No, it would go to a homes association.
Okay.
So when the.
It'd be, this is just like a, uh, apartment complex and you can buy an apartment in it.
So the out, the outdoor. Would it be shared outdoor maintenance?
I was gonna say, who maintains those lots?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, through the HOA.
Through the HOA, yeah. This is exactly what they do at John Knox Village. Except they have seven thousand of them. You know, I mean, seriously, you know, some of those actually do have fifteen hundred places.
Are these slabs or?
I don't know what are they?
Probably one slab and one basement.
One slab and one basement.
Oh, eh, three units, one slab, and the three units, one basement.
Here's what the design is, if, so you can get an idea of that.
On slabs for tornadoes.
Well, that's what we're talking, we'll have to.
I know, but my sidewalks and my tornado safety is, is my soapbox.
Well, what we could do is look at taking.
You are putting sidewalks?
Oh, yeah, it has to, yes, yes.
Cause I know there's some on Madison already.
Right, so what we could look at is require a area underneath the stairs to be. A shelter area. So.
It's pretty rough, it's a bit grass there.
I'll go back like that, so you can see it. As it is right now, though, it would start out as rental, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. And also, well, it's. These will most likely have sprinkler system, uh, fire suppression. So.
But they'll have the firewalls.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just asking.
Yep.
But our, our code doesn't require sprinklers for fire suppression, does it?
And the city's code does not.
So why would these have them, just to go above and beyond?
So the state fire marshal came out with an opinion a month ago. That they're saying they have the right to require fire suppression on anything that's three units or more.
So they're requiring it?
The fire marshals would. It sounds wonderful. But I think all of you remember the huge apartment fire in Oakland Park, burned other houses and all. Those were all fire suppressant.
The ones under construction?
There were some under construction that burned as well. That, well, that's what started them, but there were several that weren't. You can't spray the roof. That's what happened. So, and then the other pressure that it puts on communities like us, or any community, even, even the big, you know, water one, is those flow ratings.
Right.
So, yes, we will, well, we have to comply because the fire department is the one that would say, hey, you have to have fire suppression, you know. So
So is that gonna require a one and a half inch line then to the three units?
No, this is gonna be a thirteen hour system, which is a PEX pipe system.
Okay.
Probably a one inch serves all of them.
For all three of them?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And will the, I'm just curious, will the fire suppression system have water storage in a pump as a part of it? Okay, we'll need that.
That's what I was just saying, Chuck, that maybe I, the fire flow ratings, the communities will have to, or water districts will have to meet now. There's a bunch.
Yeah.
More pressure.
You know. Yeah, but no, they will not.
I have a question for you. So those four plexes we were just looking at for Oakwoods, will they then require that for all of those four plexes?
We had to talk, talk with them.
Because the, you said the state
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal from state level or is requiring that for everyone?
Yeah, entire state.
Just recently.
Just last month.
Okay.
It was received. Now, don't, you know, who knows how long it'll last. There are obviously, I think there was two hundred and something lawsuits filed immediately.
Damage in sidewalks, does this mean code gutters?
No. We can't curb and gutter.
So just sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, I mean
Now, what we are looking though, I would say
We can curb and sidewalk it, it's just a matter of how much rolling to spend on it.
Well, we could, but then the whole neighborhood has to be and, yeah, you're right.
Neighborhood, I know.
I know, I know you do. Now, I will say that there is a new sidewalk plan to come off of Webster and down around through some of those neighborhoods. If it's a case that this is on Jacob's plan to either start or be completed prior, then we would just assess the owner a bill on that and he would have to pay the city. Because we don't want, if we're starting a sidewalk project there, we're, we're bidding millennial footage. So
Explain to me, and maybe you can't explain it to me.
Is it part of the code department?
If we're doing this kind of work.
What kind?
This. I mean, we're going in here and we're, we're, we're doing lots of upgrade right here.
Oh, yeah, I see.
I mean
We're not doing it. The owner of this property, Mr. Hecky, would be.
Yes.
Yes.
But if all of this kind of work is being done.
I don't think
I'm trying to think of the right way to
Yeah, I don't think the city has the funds to do that.
Are we getting a special assessment for the older part of town, though, to pay for those things?
No.
Thought there was a discussion about that.
The discussion was, just like every time that CIP is brought to you guys, is that that, what was it, a hundred thousand dollars needs to be spent on sidewalks? And that's just a budgetary item. And now, they, they did discuss it a little bit about assessments on properties and all. But then, take your neighborhood or this neighborhood and what you're talking about.
This is my neighborhood, so.
I'm saying, take your neighborhood or Cindy's neighborhood and what you're talking about. Yeah, you know, those are very large assessments to curb and gutter and sidewalks and all that. And, I mean, I think the, the city would be more than happy, I'm sure, to do that if, you know, all the neighborhood signed up for it.
I thought I saw something on, that they were, that there was some sort of special assessment for our neighborhood, so that's why I was, okay.
Yeah. It did talk about
No, the only thing that the city's now collecting is the, the drainage water fee.
Well, they're collecting it.
Yeah, some
Oh.
Nine thousand, no, nine hundred, nine dollars.
Ninety dollars, ninety dollars a lot, a year right now is what it averages on.
And once they start collecting that, then they'll be, if they want, if they want, they can also use it to do more sidewalks and curb and gutter.
They're focused on South Street right now.
Yeah.
On that.
Well, we should look at South Street.
And they are, I mean, they are
I'm just saying, we should look at that.
Yeah, it'd be nice, it really would, while you're right there and doing all that, but
The problem is you have to start at the furthest downstream point and then work your way back to the highest point.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's a lot of downstream past this.
I will bring it up, though.
Is that retaining wall face Webster then? Repulsor retaining wall?
Yes. Well, I mean, there's, those businesses are all right there and all. But that is to the east, that's correct.
I mean, you have the state bank in Spring Hill, but there are no other businesses to the east. It's an empty lot.
That empty lots are commercially zoned, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The guy across the street rented or something.
Pat, do you have any images by chance of the proposed elevations?
No, we can, Dan can bring those. This is what he submitted this year. But you can get some elevational plans and all.
Okay, well.
Just need to know how you wanna forward, if you wanna move forward with this one as well, bringing the information and
Anybody?
Okay.
I think everybody would
Right, so just get the elevations and all, Dan, and we'll get ahold of, Phelps Engineering is doing the engineering on it, so we'll get the ball rolling with all the measurements and everything, so. Alright, thank you. We'll have a few more trees in four. I was pulling, I would have pulled up the site plan, but here's what I get. They always forget to turn that stuff off on me.
Oh, yeah.
For me, let me put it that way. And then you go in and they won't, you know, I don't have permissions, so. Anyway.
Call Harold.
Yeah, I know what Harold will tell me. So we'll come back with some stuff on that.
Okay.
That's all I have. The I'll wait till you ask me, I'm sorry.
Any announcements, reports?
Don't we have a discussion on upstanding?
Oh, on what?
Upstanding. That was the original discussion item.
I mean, that was the Oakwoods one, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's the Oakwood.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's why we started with it.
Okay.
Oh, she got it on the agenda then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alright.
It didn't say where it was for.
Okay, I just didn't realize that she had put that on the agenda, that's why I asked for both of them.
So there was, there was only one change really to
Yes, I'm sorry.
And I think Cindy wanted to talk about utility easements some more.
Yep.
So in, in the comp plan, we've said that we want some of those alleyways. If we do the alleyways, what does that hap, what happens with that? Thanks for keeping my mind straight.
Have the subject right. It's for your memory.
I mean, you mean as far as electric?
Well, like with ever you wanting to go to the front and the fiber where going to the front, what, I mean
Well, you probably could, you, no, fiber doesn't care where they go. That's why it bothers us on having those great big twenty-foot easements in the backyards. You could probably run the gas and fiber down through the alleyways. Obviously, we try and run the sewer down through there as well. Alleyways are a great tool, should have never, ever gone away from, but it's land use. But all the discussion we have is that maybe if the alleyway is a paved alleyway, there's a possibility. The main thing is to try and service their clients as fast as they can without the the least amount of destruction. Fences, yards and all that. Which, from a business perspective, you can see, it makes good sense on, you know, you, your transformer blows, you pull up there, you pick one up, you drop one down and you go, you know, so.
It's just more of an aesthetic question, but if there's no choice, then it's just something we'll have to look at, literally. Traditionally, the alleyways have always had aerial as far as power and zone and all the other stuff.
That's not even, Spring Hill is not a classified in the state of Kansas as an aerial community any longer.
Well, I had talked to Kat and I said something to Pat this weekend. We were in Lisburg and 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 again, we were up and down those alleyways. Some of them were gravel and there were some that were paved and it was like, oh my God, I wish we could get these back in Spring Hill. They're amazing.
And we do have one of that one development you've seen before, it's still in, in the works, we're working through. It's just large, you guys, and a lot of moving pieces on it.
It was, it was just nice to be, I mean, I felt like I was back home and having alleyways and their alleyways went into the parking lots up and down their main drag and it was, I don't know, it just, it was awesome. I loved it.
So
Needs to get back there.
So in the older part of town, are they doing away with the alleyways then? Are they gonna put the power underground?
Oh, no, they won't ever change it. It's just classifications. What, what it used to be is if you were classified as an aerial, they received so much money a year, not so much, a portion of money a year for the maintenance and all of the trees and the poles and all. And then when a lot of that state and federal funding dried up, and with the cost of repairing everything when the wind blows or the tree falls down, they've gone away from aerial classifications. So, and you figure the developer puts in everything. You know, the conduit, the pads, everything. They come and pull the wire and set the transformers. And still charge them for that as well, but, I mean
Well, you don't have the same, I mean, because you're, everything's buried, you don't have the same issues with having to replace transformers and stuff because there's not
Yeah, that's right.
Maintenance costs go down.
And now they're trying to reduce even more, having them ride off of some pavement. And really, you just think, look, how many houses are going everywhere? I don't know that you could hire enough linemen. You know, I mean, truthfully, it's I don't know. So I can see their point on it. I don't like the aesthetic part of it, though, that's what I don't like, but
Yeah, I think it's fine if it's the small transformers that are kinda camouflaged, but you know, whenever you drop a big one, it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, those others are just connection boxes. And, and the large is actually a transformer. As it goes right now, a twenty will cover about four houses. So you'll see one transformer for four to five houses.
Yeah, yikes.
Anything else?
I had one question, which is, I noticed tonight when I drove down Ridge U past Fox Hollow, that it's now very active in there and I obviously am behind the times because they've been doing a lot of work in there.
Yeah.
So, did, did, did they sell it or did, did they finally decide to just develop it?
No, it's old.
And then the person who bought it or the developer who bought it, they're just gonna follow the plat that was approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, yeah, I haven't seen you lately, so, yeah, there's bonds, bonds and all issued on that job.
Okay. Because I think what you told us before was that the previous developer didn't feel like it was economically viable to pursue that plan. So it's interesting that someone else bought it and decided it is.
Yeah, so Mr. French owned it before and then now what's Sean Woods's name of his company? Anyway, Sean Woods bought it. I can't remember the name of the company, so. So what I'm getting at is if you, if you look at each home that each one of them built, you all understand?
Okay. So the nature of the homes may change.
Oh, they'll change, yeah. Tom French is, well, he's been building Kansas City area for, I don't know, fifty, sixty years.
Hey, Pat, do you know the timeline, like, you know, across from the high school, when they're gonna, they got the roads put in and they're pretty good. Are they gonna start, I'm guessing they're gonna start building the homes since the weather's
Yeah.
Garrett Ranch?
They, you know, they're getting, there's, they've actually started or put in the next phase and I think they're gonna put in the next phase as well. One of the interesting things, entire Kansas City, I'll just say Mid-America Regional Council area, is that if you have developed lots sitting there, in all different price ranges, for a price range of homes, they're very sellable. The, so, oh, that's something I can bring up, but I don't know if Amy sent that out, you know, or not. The state of Kansas just passed a bill twenty-sixth, I'll have to get you the bill number, but, and what it did, it put a timeline on the amount of time that could be spent on reviewing plans and development plats and all that. If it's not completed in sixty days, and I say completed, if you don't have a, a good review in sixty days and it hasn't moved forward like through planning commission, things like that, it's automatically approved.
Automatically approved?
Yes. And so, you know, obviously, we don't drag our feet on anything here.
You mean approved by the planning commission?
It's approved. They take it up to the county.
A city can't just sit on a plant
That's correct.
Visit it and look at it, have to
It is approved. Now, right now, it's only for residential construction, any type of residential. They took the commercial and industrial part out. I think commercial will be put in next year and then probably industry following at some time. Industry's a little different, you know, you're working with a lot of things, you know, you might need to bring in huge gas lines or something, you know, sewer water, whatever the case is. But, yeah, they, these cities were just sitting on stuff and
But that doesn't include if it, the planning commission goes to city council and has to go back to planning commission, doesn't, like, if we already started the process. Doesn't include that.
So, you, you can only, it, yes, it does include that process if we have not gotten the comments back to them, okay, and adjusted back. Everything has to be to them in the sixty-day period. And it can't be, and there's, I, I can't, I'll send it to you guys, I'll have Amy send it to you. Because, and it can't be, you know, comment about something and then comment about something else and comment about something else. You know, they're saying the process has to go and get done. And they're pretty serious about it. They're gonna watch it.
So what if it's voted down?
Well, that's a whole different story. You know.
And they have an answer and they can
Yeah.
And come back or
Exactly.
They're trying to avoid tabling it for like six months.
Well, and, and the truth matters, staff sitting on them. Running through the process and, you know, or, or also a utility. Saying, yeah, we gotta do this study and that study and everything else and so, that's what they're trying to eliminate. So, that's what they're trying to eliminate. Cause it, I've went up and listened to them and some of the places I won't mention, but they were talking, you know, some of those plats been sitting up there two and a half years.
Oh, that's.
Have been bouncing back and forth and one of them up there, well, it's a very close per- neighborhood, um, by the time they got back to the governing body or something, they had added some other tax onto it that was a million something. There was a lot of testimony on it, so, it's kinda interesting really, that's why the developers appreciate all you guys. Well, I'm serious, you know, that you're willing to look at these things prior to, you know, and things like that. Show up to meetings, see, we got it made. And that was something that was brought up, uh, they really do, they said, well, you know, every other month, they wouldn't have a quorum. And this was a big city, they had, they should have had a quorum, but, anyway.
Pat, can, several, uh, meetings back, uh, the city council or the staff mentioned to the city council their desire to have meetings between the council and the planning commission, has you heard any more about that?
Yeah, um, I'll run through the process of, they had talked about the city council having a retreat. I don't know what.
Who talked about this?
City council.
It was presented to city council by staff. So it was presented to city council by staff. The governing body came back and said, no, 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 we don't wanna do that, we wanna have a meeting with the planning commission and the governing body together and talk about the vision and all that. My guess is, I mean, I don't know really if it would do much good until next year, you have elections coming on. And you have four members up, you have the mayor and three members. So, I mean, my, that's my gut feeling is they're saying, you know, let's not, uh, you think, so. But yes, that, that's something they do wanna have them. And I think if you were in a standard election, I think they would proceed on with it. I think this governing body really does wanna communicate with the planning commission, um, but the way people have been appointed and all this, there's actually four positions open, so. It's quite a bit, well, it's majority.
Well, it's three council and a mayor, correct?
Yeah, that's a majority.
No, I'm just saying it's not, the way you're saying it, it's four councils, it's three councils.
Oh, no, it's, yeah, it's three council and a mayor, but.
Hey, Pat, one more question, just go ahead.
Go ahead.
Where are we on moving the plan?
Compris of plan.
Compris of plan?
Yeah.
I've got a sense from the, I'm going to that same meeting, uh, with the governing body, that they were sort of wanting to do their own if we weren't gonna finish ours.
No, that's, no, they, there's same school of thought on that in trying to get back to what I'll just say, normal, normalcy on the governing body. So, you know, in discussions, there really was quite a difference of opinions on how to do this future land use plan. And, you know, I could stand there and argue it out for you guys and then in January nineteenth of next year, it could all change. So I think once that normalcy gets in there, you have a body that's gonna be there two years or whatever, then, cause I, the truth matters, I do not think that, you know, we've all looked at the area that was proposed and all that and we've talked about where industry should be and things of that nature. Um, and then, there is a, um, I'm not gonna say a large, but there is a difference of opinions on classify- classifications uses in what areas, so.
So you're saying that we should not, as a, as a planning commission, put forth a comp plan until the governing body election is settled next year?
That's correct.
Okay.
So basically put it on hold for a year?
That's correct.
Pat.
And, and that.
Well, it's not saying that we're gonna quit, like, we, we did, I did talk to them about going ahead and adjusting all the zoning classifications that we're talking about, we have plenty of stuff we can do and all. The other thing that, there's just a lot of moving parts, some things I just can't say. Just, you've gotta trust me that there could be a huge area.
Can we not? Can we not adapt, adopt a part of this, or can we not move forward on some of it that we know is a hundred percent, or, I don't know, I feel like we're treading water and we just keep treading water.
Like move forward if you want.
I'm being your mind, I understand, I understand. But some of this is, is things that we know that we want.
Some of it is, I agree, but then you're going to, and I can promise you this, then you're going to be coming back reviewing a major portion of it again. Now that I can promise.
If there's a, if there's major differences in the land use map.
And I wish it weren't your time.
Then that's gonna be a big deal.
It's not only the land use map.
Okay.
It is area.
That's what I mean, that area.
Character areas, right?
Area. Area.
Oh, like.
Area.
Well, I'm, but, Pat, I, I guess, quite frankly, if I'm in a meeting with the governing body, some of the issues that we've talked about in, in terms of str- the strategic plan.
Yes.
I'm going to bring up.
Yeah.
And if they disagree, they disagree, but at least we'll have maybe nine people that disagree with them, rather than just you.
Yeah, well, I understand, what I'm trying to say is we put the plan together, okay, and very shortly, there will, in a short amount of time, there's going to be area that we will then have to look at again.
I understand, I understand what you're saying there, can we not just at least pass our zones forward that we know that we've changed our zones on?
Yeah, that's part of the zon- that's what I said, part of the zoning code, we can do that.
I mean, let's get at least something to show for what we've done, there's part of it that I feel like that, that we can do. Can we not please do part of it?
Yeah, no problem, well.
So that we can, we swam some strokes and not just treaded?
Well, and, and you are the boss and we will do it, it.
I'm not the boss.
Well, I mean, you guys are, you tell us what to do on that, um, and we'll get you everything that we can get you.
And maybe now's the time to take and get Kendra up to speed on what the comp plan looks like and what we're trying to do, instead of throwing everything out in January.
It sounds like it was gonna really change the vision.
Right, at least she would understand.
Now and then and we're not even on the same page.
I understand that, but at least she would understand what it is versus, like, when you came in and you were trying to dig through that whole notebook at one time and.
We will send you, uh, fill your, uh, email, so.
Fill it, fill your bucket, girl.
I look forward to being here.
The only thing that we were going to move forward on is there was three classifications of zoning that we were gonna change. Then we were also going to look at setbacks. And the other thing that we can still work on is, you know, there's always been a consensus that you guys don't want forty foot lots. We need to either move forward to that or say, yeah, we can still work with it, but don't make it the norm. So, those are just some things that we can move forward on.
I forgot he was here.
Spencer?
He, he listens.
God, is that you? Thanks for letting us know you were there.
No.
City codes. Makes sense, but then, Pat, what, what about, you know, our, all the discussion we had about mixed use and, you know, and a desire to see more, more mixed use in certain areas? That all just get tabled, because, you know, with, without an updated plan, we're becoming ambiguous for developers.
I hate to say, I hate to say this, I cannot talk about it. Spencer can tell you, uh, when I sign these documents with companies or developers, I cannot talk about it. I'm trying to do all I, all I can do for you guys. Spencer, on, on some of this, do you feel like that in the next two and a half, three months, that we'll have a pretty good handle on some of the items that you, that we're working on, let me put it that way? Okay.
That would just be.
Hey, is, we're, uh, we're just in a tough position right now, you guys, and you guys will understand someday.
I, I'm just concerned that I keep getting asked what happened to this comp plan.
No, I get it.
And I'm tired of trying to dance around why the planning commission hasn't been very effective.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, I don't disagree and I feel like some of the comments are coming directly from council themselves. So.
So, to be fair to the governing body, there's, yeah, and to be fair to the governing body, and Spencer can back this up, there's a lot of this stuff they don't know and can't know yet.
Well.
Okay, so I, I think we've agreed.
Yeah.
To let staff discuss and Spencer and come back to us in a month maybe and try to give us some framework for understanding the next steps and why, if we need to hold, why we need to hold. And what work we could do, and, and Spencer already made a suggestion of, you know, zoning.
Right.
Changes we can do, uh, setback change.
Yeah, those are the items that we can move forward on.
Just gonna say, give us some homework that we can, give us work that we can do, that when in January, we can start working on it, or whatever month you graciously give us.
It's not up to me, it's.
Spencer, that you graciously give us, that it's not such a dump, it's just that, okay, we have these chapters done.
We can work on the zoning.
I know that my plate's gonna get really super full in June, July and August and I just would like to get done whatever we can get done.
We can work on the zoning, look.
Not that it fares anything.
You'll be surprised. Some of the stuff that we had discussed and all, um, you'll see exactly what we're talking about.
Your guys, this is gonna be July, August, September.
Hey, Pat, you, you might be able to answer this question, I'm getting asked this in our neighborhood where Josh and I live, they drained the pond in the Estates Wolf Creek, are you aware of that? Well, they drained it halfway down, the fish are still alive in there because we, me and Ella caught.
Yeah.
They, they put a pipe from the new development, you know, across from Forest Spring, it looks like it, they're expecting the water to naturally, I think, drain into the pond.
Into it, okay.
Guessing, I didn't know if you knew anything.
No, um, yeah, we don't, um, yeah, we, we don't just get those plans anymore, since we have an inside city engineer. Yeah, no, I, uh, staff might, uh, but.
I figured.
Engineering and, uh, the engineering inspector.
Gotcha, no, no problem, I just love it.
Yeah.
Tell them the name of, I don't remember the name right, tell them, tell them what the name of that new one is downtown now.
Which one?
Oh, the restaurant thing.
Oh, the Scratch?
Scratch.
Scrudge?
Scratch.
Scratch, oh.
Scratch, what's scratch?
No more bean.
They're, uh, changing the bean into scratch.
What?
They're gonna make it more of like a restaurant, I guess, I just read about it today on Facebook.
That's how, that's how I heard, and then.
Is there gonna be a new, uh, spill of the scratch?
They built a building that.
Spill the scratch?
They built the building next door.
They're remodeling it.
It's definitely open the whole time, it's well.
Very cool.
They're going to remodel it then.
That's to hurt.
It'll be like six months.
Yeah.
Same owners?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Um, I will tell you that we were notified yesterday that the, um, metal arc closed.
Yeah.
And are out of business.
Firework only or something.
Yeah.
What's that?
Firework only.
That's who we found out from is a different firework company, but we, how we found out.
There's still doing fireworks, they're just not open for, they're just.
Right, no.
Yes.
They're, not their fireworks.
I don't think it's.
Oh, they're not?
Oh, it's not even theirs?
I don't believe it.
I hadn't heard that.
We had a company in yesterday, that's how I found out, closed, and they were looking to go in there, wanted to know what the regulations were for that structure and everything, so, I, this is just, that's all I know. Cause it's getting time, believe it or not, for us to start processing fireworks permits, I know the life goes. I really do apologize that we can't do more for you guys, but, you'll see.
Anything else?
Appreciate ya.
Is that all the announcements too, or?
That's all I have, thank you.
All the announcements.
That's all you guys do. Thank you so.
Motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Then adjourn.
Thank you, Spencer.
Bakery and everything.